Good evening and welcome to the Richmond City School Board Meeting, Monday, November 19. Madam Chair.
Here.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. Young, Ms. Cosby, Ms. Burke, Ms. Owen, Ms. Page.
Here.
We have a four man chair and our extra chair is two. Right here. And for the record, let it be noted that the board is absent due to the passing of her following law. Please let's extend our condolences to her in the face. Thank you.
The next item is item one five zero two, who has pledged allegiance to the leaders of the state.
She was honored to be our president, she was president of the state.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see it?
The next item is item one four three, who has been on the agenda, I had thought I had to add that it's a proclamation that is going to be your pool. It will go to the president. You can be appreciated as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This move by this owner is something right this first. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Certainly we have none, the agenda has been adopted as amended.
Ms. Gibson? I would like to motion to amend the agenda to include a discussion for the process for taking a board position on the Coliseum project.
Do you accept it? Motion has been made by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Young to...
To discuss the board taking position on the Coliseum project.
To discuss the board taking a position on the Coliseum project. Any discussion? So, board members, please be aware that what the mayor presented on eleven sixteen was a proposal. We don't have any details of the proposal. I understand that they are working on ordinance and I have asked the mayor to come before the board at the appropriate time to explain all the details of the project. So, in the spirit of transparency, so that we all would know the details of the ordinance. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've not received any information, nor have I read the paper, because they're relying on the left turn on the news. So, so far there was written proposal from the mayor exactly how the fifty, the diversity council passed that and gets to that extent. So, if you'd like to have a discussion, I'm not going to go to the paper at this time. You can buy the information.
Call the question.
The motion was made by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Young to add to the agenda discussion for a process for the board to take a position on the Coliseum development.
Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yeah.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
No.
The last item is the fifth, the next item is the act of the third, the third amendment. The next item is the fifth, the next item is the act of the third, the third amendment. And then it's the third amendment. And the next item is the fourth, the fourth amendment. Any opposed?
Certainly.
The last, the question of the board is seconded by Ms. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Owen to approve the ordinance. As presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Certainly we have none, the ordinance has been approved as presented.
The next item is item two, taken out, and that is our representative, Rodney Robinson, which became the teacher of the year. And the time that is item two, I say, I, it's a third proclamation.
We just wanted to, took this opportunity to honor that past Rodney Robinson. And for, yes, so new work that he has, as we've been good. And we want to do different college schools to do it, and now, the two thousand and nineteen. The two thousand and nine, one, one term, into the factors to hopefully be united and able to act. And then we, uh, leave the proclamation alone, we have, uh, just, we actually have a, a more student and I can't, I do have teachers to say that we are, uh, so many of us have to. Whereas Rodney Robinson has been a history and self-respect teacher at the Virginia Education Center and has done a research in higher school teachers for nineteen years. One, whereas Rodney Robinson has still is a model and after burning power, acting as a teacher at one and empowering students to take leadership and better education. Whereas Rodney Robinson is a lifetime winner, open constantly to prepare his staff, seeking out opportunities such as the R teacher and the teacher, to embrace the dream of the College of Association. Whereas Rodney Robinson is an avid, good fellow of class, has been a passion, but having had a third much, and under that there are other things for the others. Whereas Rodney Robinson is a player in the community, serving and seeing the best families, people behind the RBA education company, and as the voice that Einstein, Einstein applied. Whereas Rodney Robinson has been awarded as the resident college school's two thousand seventeen teacher of the year. The junior one teacher of the year in the two thousand nineteen, the junior teacher of the year. Now, therefore, if you perform the school board at the city of Richmond, one of the best college schools be hereby acknowledged, Rodney Robinson has the two thousand nineteen, the junior teacher of the year, and will encourage all its citizens to congratulate him, and the colleges, as one of the nation's finest educators.
Any good words?
We would like to thank you all for your support for Rodney Robinson and all the work that he does down at Virginia Education Center.
We are lucky to have him, we are honored that he has received the recognition for all of his hard work. And, Ms. Gibson?
Excellent. Um, for me, this kind of new reason, but he was my teacher, actually, in high school. He definitely did motivation and get into this field and, um, basically for the shooting. So, appreciate it, appreciate you.
Congratulations, and we're just so honored that you, Rodney Robinson, is the Virginia State Teacher of the Year. Thank you. We could not have selected a better person.
Um, I just, I'm appreciative of everything, um, it's an honor to be recognized for what I do. You know, like I told my kids, I'm not going to be there as much this year, but trust me, I'll be out spreading that message and telling their story to, to anyone who will listen, to give them all the help and the support they need, because they need it. And also, if you would retweet a little social media campaign we have going, we're trying to get Snoop Dogg to come down and talk to the kids. He's in town on December sixth, you know, so if you could just retweet that for us, you know, we really want to make that happen. You know, I really want to get someone who's been where the kids have been and has gone on to international startup to send, send their message to the kids. So, you know, I'm just telling their story, I want Snoop to come and talk to the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, honey.
Do you accept it? This is the move by Ms. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Gibson to approve the proclamation for... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Certainly we have none, the proclamation has been approved.
The next item is item three, information, I don't think anyone who signed up in advance.
If we have members in the audience at this time that would like to come forward, please do so. If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of the organization, you have five minutes. So, please come forward at this time, state your name and sign in.
David Jones, president and founder of the Georgia Foundation. Just wanted to come forward and say this, the first gift, I would give such as Rick baby had on Saturday, which was such a blessing for about fifty young men around in the area, uh, first one working out from the town, which was our superintendent, was engaged with these young men like I've never seen before. It was very enlightening, very great to see our mayor, excuse me, our mayor, engaged with them. And our keynote speaker, Eric Curry, is one of the S A coaches of the year. Our coaches, each one of our coaches over there, we try to honor them best we could and each coach received a Thanksgiving dinner from the Georgia Foundation. It's now our young men, which is our bags, speech young men, which is their necktie, and one of these gift bags, which has earbuds and keychains in it. But the most important part of that, this bag was on the back of that flyer, which is, I told him, take it off put on email, it has all the SAT dates coming up, registration dates when they can and should register. And last, not, not last, but most importantly, which one technically sent out, oh, and those young men want to take a train, like that, and decides to not, everybody's not going to college, that's just weird. So, so instead of just sitting around wondering, you have all the information you need to get it done. Last, we got Pharaoh, all you need, they couldn't eat anymore. It was a true little blessing to see, uh, last, one of my mentors, a spiritual brother, he actually came up there the other day and donated ten thousand dollars to you guys. So, each young man tomorrow, that is at that, some, who's already organized with their student and I tell them that, that each young man will receive first at Thanksgiving dinner for this family, that we will drop off to their schools and see them tomorrow, and at Christmas, they also will receive another gift from the Georgia Foundation, and his name is Tony, that was a Tony winning man, which is a great man. Actually, he, uh, he challenges, certainly he challenges the school to match. So, at the end of the day, we, you know, we just had it, if it's possible, if it can be, every dime I will go to these young men and these young women. Because November, sorry, December the fifteenth, all the babies on the school board of the year, we will have all the young babies, to basically have something similar to a more glamorous appointment. And we will be, we are all eight of you down, and also some of the school board, the Congress, they have already participated once before, so we'd love to have them participate in this year. So, um, the mayor's want to be the same challenge, to come up with this ten thousand, so at the end of the day, we just want to say thank you. Last, and I'm honored to not say this, he works very hard, very, very hard to get this done. Mr. Early, I tell you, many early, late, big nights, early mornings, men and men, we need him to perform all the Chinese events, so I just want to be prepared and I have all the, um, effects, so, see you soon.
Thank you.
And I do have some purchases tonight, but I think I am happy doing the introduction for the, um, four point oh one, the version. Um, it bothered me when I saw the question, the members who are, I don't know, talking about this. Maybe we will can be causing, you know, a lot of those information. The information that so far is yet, that the office shows that the school board chair, superintendents, school board members are in favor of this proposal, when there's so many points that are not known. And then this evening, it's clear that it should not be discussed because those points are not known. It's me back to the point of, then, why will people act that? That's harmless. And maybe people have a lot of the issue more in parts, but one of the good, the good pieces in the office that will be used will be, if you're against, maybe go, you're against sports, and that's not turning the worst of the picture. Maybe go, there's too many definitions, like maybe against the people, like Christian, or, and the making it over five hundred pounds, and that's iconic. How is that going to, how is this going to be on the meeting? Exactly who in the land has a image of this? Exactly what to pass on this, and evidence, so that we can make a decision, so that we can make a decision. Why are people supporting that, so that the information is on, and in a proper manner, that's there to school board, as this is going to get this very, so there's been no discussion.
Thank you. Next item, this concludes our confirmation period.
And, and what we've been talking about this time, the next item is item four for business four point zero one, starts a process for the school board to take a position on the Coliseum development.
So, board members, we have the four items for the board to take a position on the announcements, the proposal that the mayor made on the sixteenth of November. And as stated before, it's a proposal, and we have not received the details of the ordinance, nor do we know the date of the ordinance. So, it's information, unknown information. But... The motion was to take a position on the Coliseum project. So, at this time, board members have comments? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. So, yes, um, I let it, we have this discussion, um, my hope and in this time, um, is to discuss what, what we want that people will be willing to take positions on the process. So, there's specific, um, information, there's a, um, petition that we'd like to have. I also, it's funny to say that, um, you know, with more development, there are always more children and more students, and so there'll be potential impact in terms of, uh, our, our school population. And, um, so, I, I, I would like to, for us as a board, to discuss what are the, the unknowns that we want to get clarity on, um, so that we can, uh, schedule a, a full position that probably we can take.
You know, other comments? Because we're discussing this, um, for the board to take a position on the Coliseum project.
I'm sorry, is this a discussion about the board taking a position, or about figuring out what information we need to fill that the board takes a position, and just what's in there?
So, Ms. George, can we restate the motion?
Um, the motion was to discuss a process for the school board, discuss a process for the school board to take, to take a position on the Coliseum development, the process.
And, I'm not sure if it's cause we, we heard this, but, um, I had previously stated that, um, talked to the mayor, and then he's willing to come to the board to make a presentation once the ordinance has been laid out in the details of the ordinance. So, he has agreed to come to the board to answer any questions that we may have. Ms. Johnson?
And so, this is, so people come to the board prior to the ordinance being presented to the school for one, two, three months.
All nine details of the ordinance and has more detailed information, because right now, we don't know. Ms. Young?
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, at the risk of stating the obvious, it's incumbent, uh, I believe it's upon of this body to, to weigh in, but I would, if you heard your assessment, Madam Chair, relates to the aspect of specificity today, I, on November the nineteenth, but I do look forward to, you provided with the documents and having that conversation with, with our friends in the mayor's office and all the, the city council. Yours truly, as, uh, as has weighed in publicly and, uh, has conveyed some of my concerns relative to the numbers specifically, and if, uh, if the numbers will indeed materialize in a way that's supposed to forecasting. That, the purpose of this conversation, whether you're there, I think, uh, the point I'm trying to make, perhaps I'm not giving it very well, but it is that, um, I do believe it's important for a public school to have that something to, to offer, to, uh, deliveration. And so, I think, uh, I think Kenya is intent, my intent, the second thing the motion would be to inquire about some of what you just laid out, specifically what that, what that process looks like. Perhaps, uh, it's too soon to identify an option, because as you said, the paper hasn't been announced yet. But if there are other, if, perhaps if there's some other people that we can do, recognize each way we've done that part of management, there's some ability we can do institutional, and we're collecting the, the, this.
Ms. Ann?
My feeling is very clear that this is their, this is their, like, this is city council's business at this point, and they're in city council. I would be, um, wouldn't have been very upset if the city council had weighed in on what schools we should build and where, before we had had that discussion and made that decision. Until city council, uh, considers this, and that, as far as I know, they still haven't received the full information, until they have weighed in and made their determination, I don't think it's up to us to be, um, to be, to be talking about. It's, there are certainly things about it that will affect us, but at this point, we don't even know if this is going to pass them. Until that happens, I think, we need to leave this up to our chief colleagues on the city council and, and mayor. Ms. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do appreciate the opportunity to at least discuss it, because I've, uh, discussed the issue, because I do think it has pretty significant implications for the future of RPS. One thing that I'm particularly worried about, or one thing that I want to please get more information on is what these numbers actually look like, of course, before we make a decision or decide whether we're going to make a decision, um, about having a formal position for a, a development project. But I, I do worry about, um, seeing headlines and seeing, uh, seeing representations made that there, there may be six hundred million dollars for our school system in the future, uh, when we understand that we have needs now that we are continuing to try to advocate for. And, um, I, my, my gut tells me that if I, I was trying to pass a Coliseum proposal, um, that I would have a fairly rosy outlook on what those numbers would look like. So, I certainly want an opportunity to dig into them a little bit further, because if the public believes that, or sees that there's six hundred million dollars on the table for RPS, and we need to continue to advocate for operations funds and for school funds and things of that nature. Uh, now, I don't want that to, um, to confuse the public about whichever support RPS has been, uh, receiving from the city. I've certainly spoken with people who've said, oh, you guys, uh, received the meal snacks money, I thought all of your problems were solved. Uh, so many people, uh, in the city, those who may not come to, uh, a lot of school board meetings may have the impression that this is a silver bullet proposal for RPS. Um, but I think we just have to look at those numbers very carefully and, uh, and continue to advocate for what we believe we need, um, not with an eye towards what could potentially come down the line in five or seven or however many years.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes. Thank you. I, I agree very much with Mr. Barlow, and, um, and, and might suggest that as a process for those board members that do have questions, um, and would like more information, that perhaps we'd identify a date, that folks can submit those, those things, so that that can be submitted for, um, request. And, um, and likewise, um, you know, if, as city council, as I, I believe that city council scheduled a special meeting today at four o'clock to receive the ordinance, so, um, so the, 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 this process is moving forward, um... So, um, so the, 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 this process is moving forward, um, somewhat quickly as, as it seems. And so, um, if there is a, a method that, um, either, uh, you know, that someone could help to make sure that we are getting information, the city council is getting information, um, so that, so that we can, can stay up to speed on, on, uh, how the discussion is moving forward so that we can plan for.
So, process wise, so again, the details of the ordinance. So, we'd like to receive the details of the ordinance. And the mayor can come before the board and make a presentation. And at that time, you can ask questions in regards to the details of the ordinance. I'll be in agreement with that. So, once we found out the details of the ordinance, that information will be available. And the mayor has agreed to come before the board to make a presentation, to ask any questions that we may have. So, at this time, seems like maybe from the tour to, um, to take a position because the unknowns, there's so many unknowns. And so that saying is put the cart before the horse. Is it right saying? I hear the saying is wrong. But, um, so as soon as we get the details of the ordinance, I'm sure that we, we made public and the board can have an opportunity to view. And then we'll have a stake where we can get a presentation and the board, we have our questions that we can ask.
Ms. Cosby? I'm sorry, and I don't want to belabor this at all, um, but just to be clear. So are we going to set a date to submit questions that we want to have answered or what?
Yes, at our next board meeting, I think there'll be more details at that time. So, at the next board meeting, hopefully, there will be more information to share.
All right. Thank you.
The next item is item five, administration business, five point zero one. We see the Virginia Department of Education's report on high school transcripts.
Good evening. Um, we have uploaded a complete report from the Virginia Department of Education. This is, um, the same report that we released, um, last week. And, um, I'll just say a few words and then Dr. Epp will be available to answer any questions that the board may have. Just to refresh everybody's memory, the state conducted an audit of our conference of high schools and found a number of irregularities that I reported to this body, um, earlier this year. Um, in response, we requested, uh, a waiver to hold harmless, um, our high school students as a result of some of those irregularities. And that waiver was denied officially, uh, last Friday. And, uh, we are now beginning the process of responding, uh, to that decision by setting up a process to make all of the necessary corrections. Just to clarify a few things, um, for the public. Uh, there were four key errors that were made going back to two thousand and fifteen. I just want to highlight what those are, again, just to make sure that this is clear. Um, number one, in a number of cases, courses were miscoded as for two credit hours when they should have been coded as one. The majority of these cases were in career and technical education subjects. Number two, in some cases, credit was given to courses that were taken multiple times by a student. Number three, credit was given in some cases for quote unquote locally approved courses. These are courses that, um, the local school division can approve, uh, approve. Um, but there's no documentation that this body or a, um, prior version of it went through the necessary approval steps for those courses. And so those credits are not technically eligible. And then last, credit was awarded for some courses taken in middle school. Um, but for a variety of reasons, um, they may not have been eligible for high school credit. Uh, we are now beginning the process of reviewing, uh, every single transcript to make sure that all of these errors are corrected. In addition, we will be looking at G P A's and at class ranks to make sure that all underlying issues are addressed once and for all. I want to clarify, this has been misreported in, in some, uh, some media outlets. Um, as far as we can tell right now, from all the data that we have seen, there's not a single high school senior who is in jeopardy of losing a credit that they need for graduation. So I want to say that again. As of right now, as far as we can tell, there's not a single high school senior in jeopardy of losing a credit because of these issues that is needed for graduation. I want to be also clear, there are seniors in jeopardy of not graduating for other reasons. Um, obviously, we will continue to work to help and assist them. But as of right now, as best as we can tell, there are no credits that could potentially be lost that would be required for graduation. Um, the process going forward, in essence, we have met with the Virginia Department of Education to map out the next steps. Um, in essence, uh, we, they are assisting us with a team of individuals who will, um, first step will be to conduct a training for school leaders, counselors, and other district leaders, school by school, high school by high school. Um, then those school-based teams will begin the process of reviewing each of the transcripts and making the corrections. And then the state team will circle back around to check in as the process proceeds. Um, we have committed to having all senior transcripts updated one hundred percent, um, by February first, which would be in time for the first semester report hunt. And then all other high school, um, transcripts, that would be juniors, sophomores, and freshmen, um, by April first. Am I that correct? Yes. Um, this is a rather laborious and extensive process. Um, and, uh, it's a necessary process. We absolutely have to get this right, and we will get it right. And, um, though this is a, a difficult exercise that we have to now undergo, ultimately, it's the right thing to do to ensure that our transcripts are one hundred percent accurate going forward. And this is something that we will not have to address, um, anymore after this year. Um, last, let me just say, um, because it is a rather extensive process, um, there might be other things that are, of course, pressing that we may have to deprioritize over the next several months and as we work to achieve those goals. Uh, and so as those things arrive, I'll certainly inform the board if we do need to shift resources, um, or. With that, um, I'll ask Dr. Epp to come up and if the board has any questions, um, I'm sure she will be able to answer.
Good evening. Would you all like to, for your presentation?
Uh, there's no, there's no additional presentations.
Oh, okay. All right. Listen, y'all, and it has all.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, I don't want to step on a presentation. Um, well, first, I want to commend, uh, my colleagues and, and this administration for doing that laborious work. And this is not easy. And second, I want to commend, uh, this board and this administration for really, in my opinion, changing the culture pertinent to transparency and allowing for people to take ownership. I'm referring to principally our people in the building and to point out those things that are broken. So, all that said, uh, my question regards, in, in the past, prior to this administration, I mean, I, I understand that obviously, training is important, V two E training is important better than this. But I'm just curious, yeah, my question is, if we can attribute all of our problems, sins of the past to just a lack of understanding, knowledge, or if in the past, there were problems where people, I have to believe that there were people that knew that there were problems, but because of that preceding culture that we are now changing, uh, if folks didn't whistleblow, they didn't point out, oh, gosh, you know, um, this, this, this isn't, this isn't correct. Uh, so I'm just trying to get a handle on, yes, I don't want to diminish the value of training, but that culture piece is really important to it.
Yes, and, and to answer the question directly, I don't know. Um, and what I will say, I've said this at schools, I'll say it again publicly, it is important to me and to this administration that when something is being done that is not right, um, that folks raise their hand and let us, um, there will never be retaliation for that as long as I'm superintendent. Um, that is exactly what I would expect individuals to do. Um, I am not going to focus on the past, though, with this effort. We're going to focus on the future. Um, regardless of how and when we got here, we are where we are. Um, it's now squarely my responsibility and this administration's responsibility to fix it. We take that seriously, and that's what we're going to do.
Ms. Ball?
Goodness me. Uh, four hundred and fifty-five pages, is that what it only? Um, and going through it, there's so many things besides the transcripts, the course descriptions, um, the course offerings. It just boggles the mind. And so I want to start by saying, thank you for not leaving us immediately. We do so appreciate all this hard work that you and your staff are doing and will continue to do. Um, I know it's going to be hours and hours and hours of work. And if you need to come back to us and say, you know, we need some, something more, um, we need, uh, obviously, we're going to have to weigh in on the, um, local courses at some point soon. Um, but if there's anything else, I mean, if we need to take some things out of our offerings, I mean, I look at all these theater one, theater two, dance one, dance two. Maybe we can't offer every single solitary thing that's listed in here. Um, what, what you bring to us, I promise you that we will all support what you need from us because this is huge. And I still haven't made it to the last page of the last appendix. Um, I know, it is, and is it? But it's, it's just so much. I mean, and they are, they are so in the details. Notice I didn't say please, about every single solitary thing. Um, and it's not to say we don't need to do it, but I am just in awe of even looking at climbing El Capitan in this short amount of time, and the turnaround is just so hard. So, please, um, yes, if there are things we need to release you from so you can focus on this effort, please feel free. I mean, I think it is just an overwhelming task. And thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, and you're welcome. Um, and it really is a team effort. And Harry and, uh, Harry and I have been working on this quite extensively. And our school counseling teams and our school principals will be spending a ton of time on this as well. So, when this is all done and fixed correctly. And simultaneously, we're in the process of launching our program of studies overhaul for nineteen twenty so that that's no longer a root cause of some of these confusion points. So when all that comes out, um, so, well, um, yeah, but we, we do, thank you for the all of our support, and it will be a huge team effort.
Ms. Cosby?
Ms. Bur. Um, thank you, Dunja, for all of your work on this. And, um, I echo everything that my colleague, um, Ms. Ellen has said. I do, uh, and you might not have gotten to this place yet, but if you can just give us a sense of when we should be looking for this type of information. Um, and echoing both what Jonathan and Linda have been leading to. So, uh, I know everything is not about training because there were, oh, you know, there is a ton of, um, information in the board needs to publish, uh, booklet. Um, uh, however, so it's not all about training, but my basic question is, do we have the infrastructure in place to address these issues going forward? And if we don't, um, when do you think we'd be able to see, uh, get some idea of what has to be put in place to address these issues? One, and then second, um, um, if we can get an idea of any type of budget implications that we're thinking of in terms of addressing this issue?
I appreciate the question, and I think it's a really smart one. Infrastructure-wise, in terms of fixing the current transcripts and doing the current work, there's no other way that we can find to do that except line by line, student by student. And that's for all of our high school students. So that is just going to take, that's why the date is set to April first for all of them to be done. And that is a pretty aggressive timeline and means that our counselors at the school level are going to have to balance multiple responsibilities. Um, however, simultaneously, I do believe we're putting in place the right process steps to, um, ensure that our systems are talking to another, that our timelines annually line up, and that there are, um, review and sign-off periods of very clear owners. So I do believe, um, getting that right while we're also fixing this historical issue will be a really critical part to, um, sort of infrastructure, for lack of a better term. Um, I do think we historically have only had one staff member centrally assigned to support counseling, K twelve. And as you can imagine, the needs of a counselor for elementary school versus middle versus high are quite different and unique. Um, and then when you layer over the, um, I would say, career and college and life planning responsibilities that high school counselors have, that's another lift. And I, I'm certain that they are overloaded at the school level. So, any, any budgetary implications, I think, coming forward in the next year's school budget might be taking a look at some of that, but we're not sure yet because we also have to understand what they are spending their time on. Um, but I will, I think as we go through this process, we should, we will keep in mind what we think those additional needs are, whether it's infrastructure or additional capacity. Um, we, in the reorganization that you all approved earlier this year, it did account for adding an additional position at the central level to support counseling, um, at, at a coordinator level. So, that position has been posted, and we're currently searching for that position.
Ms. Bur?
Thank you. Yeah, Chair. Dr. Epp, this is a lot. This is a lot. And then I agree with my colleague, thanks for saying. Because just beyond this as well, we're playing catch-up and we're cleaning up. But I'm glad that you're here to do the job. You are the ruler for the job to get it done. But my concern is, number one, as we stated earlier regarding the training piece, our counselors are overloaded, elementary level as well, that's a given. So at some place, at some point, we do need to look at that. And I'm thinking back to my sons being in high school, originally schools. This is one of the guides, council system, get the students ready to go to college, get the students to do this, get the I E Ps be a part of that. This, at some point, it goes back to accountability, and it goes back to training, but it also goes back to being realistic regarding the working. So at some point, I hope the board does have an opportunity to, to revisit that. Um, timeline-wise, you said April, but we're getting something in January?
So by the end of January, uh, all senior transcripts will have been corrected and verified. And then by then by the end of February, all junior transcripts and so on, such that we get everyone by April 1st.
So that helps with those students, their grade point average may change, or not, or their placement, what would change?
Their rank and grade point average, because there will be adjustments, there will be changes there.
So they will know in January, so they can continue to make that.
So in a little time to the end of the first semester grades as well.
Okay.
And that's typically when we release class rank for seniors at the end of the first semester, so this will be done in time to do that.
Is there anything else that we can do, if I'm, you can use well, to help with this? Not pointing at the students' records, but, because I believe in the arts, the dancing and the whatever else, I would be very upset if those courses are not offered because it's about addressing the whole child and the well-rounded. There's so many, but that's, that's, that's another story. But if there's anything else that we can do with all the retired persons that sit in, they're eager and waiting to do something, so there's nothing else.
Wonderful, thank you.
I did just want to clarify, there is absolutely no intention to reduce the number of local offerings that we have. We do, though, want to make sure that what we are offering, if it requires board approval, we have set approval. So I think that's one of the key issues.
And I would say, as we look at our program of study for the future, we do need to take a look at simplifying the complex universe of the course catalog that has proliferated over time. And I think it's less about folks doing something intentionally wrong and folks working to either meet the needs or interests of students or families, or meet the, you know, thinking that students needed something different, and so offering that without the clear process or the accurate process. And so what we now have is our, our course catalog has grown to a pretty large, complicated set of courses that we may not even be able to, that aren't even actually all offered, and would not be able to support quality programming around. And so we do have to kind of go simplify to see, you know, in some cases, we have courses that are very similar but have a different name. And so do we need to offer both of those courses, or a singular state-approved course that gets the same objective? So that's some of what we'll be doing. So rather than, I would think of it as less as reducing options and more about simplifying and clarifying, because it has grown quite large.
Ms. Valo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank you, Dr. Epps, and Mr. Camerons, and the entire administration for all the work that you're putting into helping us clean, clean up some of these systemic issues that we bumped into. I know that, you know, even when we were talking about the Harbor Elementary situation, we understood at the time, and I think we continue to understand that we're still figuring out where some of the issues are buried, where some skeletons are buried, and I'm just really glad that you guys are up to the task of helping to resolve them. I also want to thank members of the public who have been continuing to submit questions and inquire about what's going on, as well as particular staff members who are answering multiple emails on Sunday afternoons when they should be spending time with friends and family. And I realize I'm saying thanks a lot, and maybe that's because of the holiday coming up this Thursday, but most of all, I'm really thankful that our students don't appear at this point to, to have been penalized dramatically for, for these basically administrative oversights. I do wonder if there are technology solutions that we should be exploring to help stay on top of these issues. And I do want to point back a couple of years because in our first budget cycles aboard, the superintendent did request school-level system operators, I believe they're SysOps, in that budget to help deal with some of the data issues at our schools on the ground level. So I'm not sure if that's the framework we want to adopt, but at least there was some documentation of a need in the past, and I voted to support that in the past, and certainly vote to support anything we need to do to make sure that we're accurately retaining this information and protecting that information as well.
Ms. Gibson and Ms. Leong?
Thank you. It is overwhelming. I have several questions and a suggestion, and I'll go one at a time. The first question is, how these transcript issues intersect with the transcript issues that were identified in spring? Did we resolve all of those concerns? Are all those matters accurate in transcripts now as we move into addressing these new concerns?
So the transcript issue of the spring, specifically around class rank and GPA, as well as some of the layout on the transcript issues, that, those corrections were in progress. So class rank was corrected at the end of the calendar year, and so we won't run that again until the end of January for our policy. So we believe that if this weren't changing, that would be corrected, and the way that that's run would be corrected. The GPAs, we began, for seniors, those GPAs were corrected. We then began the work of going through all of the other transcripts when the audit started to happen, and we realized that this was a much deeper issue that's related to courses that would ultimately impact GPA. So we stopped that work and focused on first reworking school schedules to make sure that there were no courses in the 18, 19 school year that fell into the categories that these issues are for. So the short answer is, we do not feel that we can say with 100% confidence that current seniors and below were fully corrected because this work happened in the midst of those correction, that correction, and during the summer when counselors were not on contract.
Understood. And then the other question, other question is regarding the specialty schools, which were not included in detail in this report, is that something that is in the works?
They were not included in the detailed audit, but they will be included in the transcript correction and review process that will be verified by the DDOE. So at the end of this whole process, every single high school, comprehensive and specialty, all transcripts, courses, credits, GPA, class rank should be fixed by April 1st.
And then the Richmond Technical Center, so that, that program, I mean, I've bid it a school, and, but I have less clarity in terms of, you know, there are so many different programs, and so when students are enrolled, you know, what are the courses and how does transportation, you know, it's identified in their impact, because if you're on a bus, you're obviously not taking class. And so my one question or request is, you know, to get a bit more detail about how that program works now, understanding that adjustments may need to be made as we move forward.
Sure. And in a nutshell, I can tell you that the way it is set up, so every student has their own zone or home school, so no student goes to RTC, you know, in their, as their home school. So students go for three-hour blocks. And in some of those adjusts, the adjustments that we made at the beginning of the year around the high school schedule that was not done in the right way, that, that was in part to address the, some of the issues that were coming up in this audit, because students were spending, losing instructional time back at their home school due to transportation. We believe the scheduling adjustments we worked to change at the beginning of the year are the path to correcting that issue. The, the way that the program in RTC affects the credit issue is the time students are spending at RTC, typically three-hour blocks, was misunderstood as a business rule for how much credit a course should be. And so that was just really a misunderstanding about the nature of the course and the time, seat time being a driver of credit versus the design of the course being a driver of credit. So there are some RTC, there are some CTE courses that in their design and as outlined by the state code are legitimately two-hour, um, two-credit courses, and that's when you would spend all three hours in that course. Those are typically levels two and three courses, though not exclusively. So what was happening is, basically, some courses are really only a one-credit hour course, which would be 140 seat hours, but that was being misunderstood and being applied to two-credit hours. That probably did not make a lot of sense. But the short of it is, there are some CTE courses that are legitimately two credits, and there are some that are one, and they were being completed, and, but it, so that's the nature of how the programming confused some of the CTE credits. So I also want to clarify, just because you have a CTE course credit on your transcript that you took at RTC, that does not mean you will necessarily lose that credit. Some of those courses are legitimately two-credit courses, but not all.
Ms. Leong and Dr. Sepein, I have to ask you a few, I'll come back to you, if that's okay.
Mine was just really, just an observation, just real brief, I just wanted to acknowledge something that Cheryl and Tracy said earlier, they said something, the same thing, they said it differently, though. Cheryl used the word accountability, Tracy used the word, who's the owner, and, I mean, everybody up here, and it was kind of my approach to things. I think that's one of the, I really do think that was one of the problems in the past, you know, that old saying, when everybody's responsible, nobody's responsible. So I was so pleased when I heard a moment ago, you say what you said, who's the owner, and then my colleague said, accountability piece affirming what you said, just wanted to make that observation.
Dr. Sepein?
Quick question, and I'm prepared to, because you said that no seniors were affected, but my question is, had all the other students been identified, notified, and advised on their next steps?
So I think, you want to clarify?
Well, I just want to clarify, there are many seniors who have been affected. By that, I mean, they may lose a credit, just that they will not lose a credit that is required for graduation. So I want to make sure that I'm clear on that. What was the second part of the question?
Everyone else, have they been identified, notified, and advised on their next steps?
No, in fact, no students have been notified yet at all. Where they stand, we still have the work to do to review all the transcripts before we can notify students or families of anything specific.
So to clarify, in the transcript audit in the DDOE's report, that is the result of a sampling, a large, a very large and comprehensive sampling, but a sampling. And we did our best to sort of extrapolate that and create a scenario of how many people may be impacted. But until we do a student-by-student, line-by-line review, we will not be able to say with certainty exactly how a student is or is not affected. So a student, so built into our timeline is, at the end of each month, so at the end of January, when all senior transcripts will have been reviewed and corrected, we will make sure that any affected, any student who is losing credit as a result of this, because it will not be every senior, but there will be some, any senior who's losing credit will be notified of what that credit was for and why their, that credit is being rescinded. But at this time, we do not believe that will impact their path to graduation if they are otherwise on track to graduate on time. Does that make sense?
It does, I'm just worried that if it would mean, if not with me, then why not at the store?
Absolutely. And I think that's the, I think that is the, we can put in the hours and the long work, I think the hardest part is if you are a senior, trying to figure out your next step and understanding where you might stand, that is a difficult, very, very difficult place to be, which is why we want to get this done as quickly as possible. And I would say, yeah, absolutely.
If I could just add one more note, as Dr. Epps said, excuse me, the state did an extensive sampling, but the state has not reviewed every single transcript, and the important point about that is, as we do the transcript by transcript review, it is possible that we will identify other issues. I cannot say with 100% certainty that all issues have been identified. We think the vast majority have, but I did want to raise that and prepare the board and the public, there could possibly be something else when we go through every single transcript line by line. And we don't anticipate anything significant, but if we've learned anything from this process, it is that this is a tangled web, and it's going to take time to unravel, and as we do so, there may be other issues that arise. And we will, of course, certainly apprise the board and the public of those if they do impact arise.
Ms. Gibson, and then I have some questions.
Thank you. The other question, I sent a email asking, so in the report, it says the DDOE recommends that within two weeks of receiving those response, RPS leadership will develop a timeline for securing RPS board approval for local elective courses. That seems very aggressive, and I'm wondering what the response will be to the DDOE to fulfill that requirement.
We have a, a draft timeline that takes all of those next steps that the DOE laid out, is clearly in the short term, to get that all lined up, to do the training, the onsite work, assign the teams, et cetera. So we have, we mapped that timeline out, and we're waiting for confirmation that that schedule works for the DDOE staff who will be supporting this process. We, by November 30th, so by the end of next week, we will have finalized the, I would say, the process that I think we need to follow, that we will finalize the process for determining which local courses we will recommend as eligible for board consideration in terms of the local courses. So just in all candor, I don't think all of those courses would be courses that we would bring for review based on the nature of those courses. My goal is to recommend which those, which local courses are eligible for retroactive board approval by the week of December 10th, so that I can come to the board at the first meeting in January, but there would be time for review. So that's the current draft schedule in that timeframe.
I'd like to add two other points. One, this entire timeline is being developed with the DDOE, so they are fully aware of all of these timelines, and I think it would be fair to say are in compliance with their guidelines that they issued. Would you say that's accurate?
Absolutely.
Okay. And second, I just want to, again, clarify for the public, for the board to be able to retroactively approve a course, a local course, one, as Dr. Epps said, we need to make sure that it's a course worthy of retroactive approval, and some are not, that even if it is worthy, we need to have syllabi or other course materials which clearly indicate the content of the course. If those don't exist, we are unable to ask the board for its retroactive approval, and I want to be clear, no such materials can be created at this point for a course that has already occurred. So part of the work that has to happen is to identify these resources if they do in fact exist.
And that has to go back to 2015 in order for credit in the 2015, 16 school year to not, to be awarded.
Ms. Leong, you know, I have some questions.
Yeah, I'm really glad the superintendent said that, because to your point, we likely have, if, wrong is the word in the English dictionary, if our record-keeping at schools and/or in central office was less than ideal, we likely have had some attrition as it relates to people teaching courses. So there's some probability, I don't know if we're prepared to assign a number to it, but there is some probability that we don't have syllabi and/or course assignments, et cetera, just for no other reason than folks have been longer employed with, for example, schools. Carefully, there's somewhere we can contact them, and they still have them on a hard drive somewhere, but anyhow, I was just grateful that you made that, that point.
Or our families may have them as well, right? So I just want to know that we have had a number of parent advocates, including some in the audience this evening, who have been very helpful in raising these issues, giving historical perspective, and I think this is another area where families, students, parents can be helpful in identifying the resources that they may still have as part of their experience in those courses. But again, that, this gives you a flavor of the laborious nature of the process that is before us and the very imperfect nature of the process.
So, Dr. Help, I too would like to thank you, and just, just to share sentiments to my colleagues around the table. to my colleagues around the table, my question, I know we talked about training, but it also goes back to education. And I know that saying, that old saying, it takes a village to raise a child. So our teachers, counselors, principals, the whole RPS family. Because as a student, students ask teachers about classes and how many credits this class, you know, has. And, and I remember working in Nrembo County, various depart, well, all the departments would have a set time that, that department and the guidance department would come together, and it was more, I guess you could call it recruitment, but clearly go over the course subjects, the credits, and how this class or are they on track, or the CTE plan. So is that something that we could look at? And also, are there indicators that we as a board, that we can be ensured that the processes are working, and making sure that our students are receiving their appropriate course credit?
So engaging teachers in this process and ensuring that our high school teachers in particular are aware of, I think, some of the headlines to look out for, and also understanding the graduation requirements and our program of study and why the courses have been outlined the way they have been, starting with our department chairs per se. I think that's a great idea. So we should, we can definitely think about how to, how to deliver that in the right way with teachers. And, and on the, on the process side, I think when we bring, when we bring before you the program of study for the 1920 school year, outlining what the annual process should be could be a, a way to start, to say which key steps have been, have been followed or verified. Because, well, I think there's certainly some infrastructure questions that I want to think about. A lot of this is, is really the breakdown of process ownership and, I would say, a culture of trying to figure out what students need to move to the next level, but not always thinking through, can our students do more? And so some of the courses that you'll see as we get into all of this are courses that, and I shared this with you all earlier, that aren't eligible for credit are those, some of those two-part courses that aren't really meant for a traditional student and things like that. So that, that's just, I think, that's a leadership question. But most of this is process checks and how we work across departments to make sure everything that we're putting in front of schools and counselors and teachers and students is accurate. There's no reason we should have inaccurate schedule codes that are provided, for example, like in our system, or a course that's not really a course shouldn't be in our system, and there were legacy courses in our systems. So that's where some of the confusion is.
Yeah, because just like with the CTE plan of study, I mean, that clearly lays out the courses, the credits, and that pathway that you need to follow is a part of that plan of study, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'm baffled. Seems to be very clear. Doctor, Ms. Gibson, I gave you a doctor title.
I'm not a doctor. Yeah, so, so one, one thought as we move forward, consideration, is that we consider including an agenda item at all of our meetings, you know, through, to get status updates where we are with this, because it is such a big critical piece. I think that would help so that, again, the public knows where things stand, and I, and I want our board to send the message that, that, you know, that this is, this is, you know, item number one. So, so that's just a consideration to make. And then the other question that I had, and I promise this is the last one, is regarding the, the items that speak to kind of the who's doing what, which admittedly made my eyes cross as I was trying to make heads or tails of it, because it is so dense. But, but I wonder, I mean, as, as, as I'm presuming that there've been conversations with principals and, and the team about just, you know, the doability of the stuff. It seems like a lot of work, and they have other things that are going on as well. Is this, have we gotten confirmation that, that, that our, our teams felt confident that they'd be able to meet those expectations?
Well, simply, but we don't really have a choice based on the DOE mandated timeline, but also I think the urgency with the students and the seniors' timeline is very real. So we have not sat down and gone over every date with principals yet, and so we, but we, no. And I think the question is, what needs to come off their plate to be able to do this? And I think, bigger picture, what are the things that need to come off, what are the things that we need to change about what's on principals' plates so they can be those true instructional academic leaders and see these issues, so they're not just fully delegated to counselors, but that principals are involved? So our process builds, builds principal involvement. It does mean that they're going to be pulled away from other things, and that's something Harry and Mr. Brown are going to be thinking through in terms of how to support principals with that. Would you add anything?
If I, if I may add, to the state's credit, they have already articulated an openness to changing timelines on other matters before us related to the corrective action plan or other such issues, precisely for the point that we made. And so we're in the process of thinking through that and sort of formally requesting those extensions and those sorts of things. I'll just say, from the administration's perspective, we welcome a standing agenda item on this until we finish the work.
Yeah, I mean, I would encourage that.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. That as we, as this is introduced to the school leadership teams, that we encourage their candor, because, because, you know, although we have to do it, it's still, if it's too much, something's not going to happen. And I think that that's, that reality is what's, part of what's gotten us to this place. And so, so I, I think, as it's presented, to say, look, I, I want to know honestly, what can we and can we not do, so that we can be realistic as we move forward.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, Mr. Young, and then I have a process question for the board.
Just real briefly, the chair made a point a moment ago, and my, my question regards, and this is, at best, you probably address this in an anecdotal way, but how, how well our students know their curriculum, which is what the chair was getting at previously? And I, and I comment this from somebody who happens to work with college students, and college students that candidly in the past, through no fault of their own, really struggled with how well they knew their curriculum, partly because it kept changing all the time. And, and so I, so I asked that question in the context of something that Scott said when he spoke to technology, and at Virginia State University, we just recently implemented something called DegreeWorks, which complements our banner interface. Anyhow, my point is, or my question, is how well our students know their curriculum? And if the answer is what I think it probably is, if there are two Scots, and to the chair's point, if there are either technology platforms and/or human interface processes that we can introduce to increase the, increase the awareness, increase the awareness of our students so they know precisely what it is that they're buying. I happen to know students at a particular college who didn't know what they were buying very well, and it introduced all kinds of problems. I think it can be solved with both those two recommendations I heard my colleagues make a moment ago.
So process. So how does this coincide with the MOU? Because with the MOU, MOU, we receive monthly updates regarding progress with the different, the various items regarding the MOU. So, and I've heard colleagues around the table receiving that monthly update, receiving the monthly update, but how does it all coincide? Or does it? Or?
Well, I mean, I would say broadly speaking, this work is part of the corrective action plan, and that, it speaks to some underlying issues that need to be addressed for us to ultimately reach accreditation and be exited from the MOU. And so, in that context, I'd be glad to sort of present the update on the MOU and this work concurrently if that suits the board. This is certainly one of our very top priorities for the next several months. So it'll certainly be front of mind, and I'd be glad to provide, again, all updates to the board.
So in the corrective action plan, that's a monthly update, so that transcript can be a part of that update, providing the board the necessary information that we need?
The administration is more than happy to follow the bill of the board. So we can do it concurrently with the monthly cap update. The board wants additional updates at every meeting, and I am more than happy to provide those as well, certainly whatever the, the pleasure of the board is. I can tell you, we'll be working on it every day, so I'm glad to provide updates as requested.
So is the board comfortable with that information being a part of the corrective action plan, because that is the work of the corrective action plan?
I may just add one more thing. We are putting together a dedicated page on the RPS website specifically for this matter. We will continue to upload resources and information as they become available, whether we have a board meeting or not. So I just wanted the public to know, we've established an email box, an email account specifically for this purpose. For the public, it is?
Transcripts@rvuschools.net.
That's right. We have two public meetings already scheduled, we'll be scheduling more, so we will try to get as much information out as we can, as frequently as we can, and the website can serve as that repository. And again, glad to update the board as frequently as the board would like.
So we'd like to make note that the two meetings, December 4th at 5:00 p.m. at Thomas Jefferson High School, and then Thursday, I'm sorry, the first day, December 4th, is Tuesday. And the next meeting, we held Thursday, December 6th at 7:00 p.m. at Huguenot High School. Ms. Burke, at 7:00 p.m. And these are two Q and A sessions for students, families, and members of the public. So again, Tuesday, December 4th at 5:00 p.m. at Thomas Jefferson High School, and Thursday, December 6th at 7:00 p.m. at Huguenot High School. So please take note of that. Ms. Burke?
I believe it was last week when this superintendent had this, Mr. Cameron said this meeting at Armstrong High School. I was so proud of the students there, because they had so many questions. In fact, when it was time for Q and A, a couple of the seniors and juniors asked us, well, my concern is that on Tuesday, December 4th, being at TJ and December 6th at Huguenot, and knowing the transportation means of many of my students in the East End, is there a way by which we could have an assembly, maybe during the course of a day for about 30 minutes, generally? I don't want to hinder instructional time, but many of my students work after school, many of them do not have transportation, not unless the school system provides that. But I don't want to, Armstrong needs that support. So my question is, is there a manner in which we can set up something? The children know what to ask, and they do know what they're taking, but some of them always get left behind. But the young ladies, you know, that night, they were, they were shocked, they were focused, they were, their college ready, most of them were already taking AP classes thanks to the refamp that was done here. But is there any way by possible that those students, some of them don't even understand fully what's going on, because they, we're getting things piecemeal? So is there any way you or representative could?
Yeah, I do want to clarify, we will have some sort of meeting at every single high school.
Okay, alright.
We just wanted to immediately get two public meetings out, so that folks would have an opportunity on their calendars. But we will figure out either after school or during the day, an opportunity at every single one of our high schools to go through all of these issues. And I imagine we will likely need multiple opportunities over the next several months. But we want to quickly schedule a couple, and so that is, is the course that we get. So we will work to figure out the rest and follow up with that soon. Probably after the off day, when we'll announce this.
Ms. Carlson?
Just speaking to that, I mean, I know it's extremely important we have these meetings at high schools, but also in report, there, there, there was a significant mention about our middle school credits. And there's a lot of young people taking credits, thinking that they're going to get high school credit. And I think there's a lot of confusion in the middle school level two that should be addressed as well. I mean, maybe, I'm just, we have, can have a middle school level two, because that would be the issue.
Yes, we'll figure out how to have meetings at middle schools as well. I, I don't want to overpromise that I will be able to make all of those meetings, but members of the team will certainly make sure that at all of our middle schools and all the high schools, we're able to have an opportunity for students and families to ask those questions and get them answered correctly.
That really wasn't my first question. But really, my question, you talk about processes, and the chair, and so there's agreement, yes, the corrective action will be a standing item every month, but we also earlier talked about balanced scorecard too. And so how do we incorporate, I don't know, this can be incorporated, how do we incorporate this to make sure it is part of our balanced scorecard and that we are indeed keeping track or have a balanced scorecard? Because I think there's going to be, there will be some format changes, or I don't know, are there? I think that's what, I think that's before.
Format changes to the scorecard?
Yeah.
Yes. There will be, there also are going to be format changes to the transcript, to make it a little bit more easily understood for students and families. And so, I'm sorry, the question, I just want to make sure I'm responsive to the question.
Incorporating this in our balance, making sure that all of, that we're connecting the core pieces of our service in the balance.
Yes, and so that is something that we very much want to rethink, to make sure that it is fully responsive. I will also say, though, per our earlier conversation, that is likely something that it's going to take a little bit of time, and we're going to have to focus squarely on just the transcript issue for right now. So I would ask for grace from the board on a timeline for more comprehensive revision of the balanced scorecard.
And also to Ms. Carlson's point with our middle schools, I think it's critical that our middle school students are aware of the course credits like geometry, earth science, algebra, to be eligible to apply to our specialty schools. earth science, algebra, to be eligible to apply to our specialty schools. Um, because a lot of times, and I can speak to MLK, Michelle, um, maybe even Henderson, a lot of times our families are not aware of the opportunities and the courses that they need to take prior to the eighth grade or in the eighth grade to just even, to be eligible to apply to the specialty schools. So I think we need to, um, make it a point that our middle school students be aware of the process, course credits as well.
Yes, and we'll address that in the upcoming scheduling season and counseling season for the upcoming school year. And there are some, there have been some changes over the years about what's truly required versus what is perceived to be required, um, that is causing some confusion at these specialty schools, at the governor's schools, per se. So that is a top priority for us to clarify for families and in those sessions, um, for current, uh, rising non-middle school students.
Right. Because I think our specialty schools are clear as far as the promise, but you, to your point, not sure about, um, the governor's school. I know it's different standardized tests, but-
We can definitely make sure all students and families understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is map point 02, receiving water update.
Good evening, school board.
All right, good evening, again. Uh, here to provide an update on the school water testing across RPS. I think for the first time, I had the chance to address the board was about this same, uh, issue. Um, and we're happy to be able to come back a few months later and talk about the process that we made there. Make sure that all of our kids have safe, clean drinking water in, in our schools. So as a background, uh, last year, the Virginia Assembly, uh, passed legislation requiring that all school districts test and remediate portable water where necessary. Um, the legislation stated that we should use EPA testing protocols, including a 20 parts per billion threshold. Uh, RPS decided to go with a 15 parts per billion threshold, which is more aggressive. Uh, we contracted this work out. I want to be fair that RPS employees did not, uh, take these samples, even with an independent vendor who specializes in this work and will work all around the Commonwealth. Um, in total, we have used $933,000 of the $1,000 allocated for this purpose. So it moved very aggressively for the past few months, so I'm trying to say there. Um, and in terms of next steps, uh, because this is so critical and so physical, we really want to make sure we're communicating effectively to all of our parents. Um, so in the next few weeks, you'll see a website, a webpage dedicated to, uh, school by school data. Um, we've been tested, one of the testing schedules on B for each school, and what results were. So in terms of what we do with our drinking fountains, we replaced 367 fountains across all four schools. Uh, and these are a mix of fountains ranging from, uh, the bottle fillers that you see there. We also address some of our APA concerns by, um, installing a wide level of water fountains, so that students with bill chairs can access them. Um, so we really did a lot of work here to ensure that, uh, all of our, all of our systems have full, full of water. Going forward, we want to continue to test annually. And if at any time a water source fills above five parts per billion, which is the same level of drinking water, we plan to take it offline, uh, work through remediation, and also share that information with students and families. Um, that's only one part of the equation. Uh, we have a human investment in these water fountains now, but we want to make sure that we maintain that. So to that end, we're also going to create, uh, water fountain cleaning schedules. We should have postos so that parents can, we should have postos so that parents are able to see what's being cleaned and can win as a accountability measure. Uh, and we're also going to contract out the replacement of filters to independent buildings, just to make sure that this work is done consistently. On our sinks and our fountains, uh, so the legislation only required us to test drinking water. We did decide to test everything, including our sinks. Uh, we tested everything in buildings prior to 1987, and we totally replaced 235 fountains across 30 schools. Out of an abundance of caution, RPS does trend to post, do not drink signs, uh, in our bathrooms and around, uh, science cable outlets, which allows students to know they are not to drink that water, but should go to one of our main filtered waters, water centers. Um, going forward, we plan to test even sources once everybody cares. And also to go to the water fountains, post, uh, maintenance schedules so that folks are able to, to see that work or take a care of it. And that is it. Are there any questions?
Mr. Brown, Ms. Burke?
Thank you, ma'am, sure. Uh, I'm really glad that we, uh, we've taken this issue so seriously. Um, can you remind us, replacing 367 drinking fountains is a big deal. Did all of those have heightened lead?
No, they did not. So the, the EPA threshold was 15 parts per billion, and these range really had two fountains across the division of over 20 parts per billion. Well, because they did register above the five parts per billion, we're trying to move to, we did take the action of the recent.
Thank you, ma'am. When can we expect, uh, can you remind me of when we expect the detailed report?
Before the end of the year. We're going to put this all up on the website.
Thanks so much.
Ms. Burke? Thank you, ma'am, chair. This is when the school just passed a couple of weeks, everyone is so happy to have cool drinking water and they can use their glasses or their bottles to replenish. It's, it's, it's made a big difference in terms of students just being happy about having great water and more. Also replacing those old water fountains that constantly, we were submitting tickets to get them repaired, but they were so outdated. So that's a great thing. Now regardless, my question is the, the cleaning, posting the cleaning, that's to clean out the whole, you mean clean out the part where they drink or clean out-
Clean out the standards, make sure there's no debris left over there. Um, to make sure that we are maintaining these, that we should, since it's a human investment, we want to see it working down in the future very consistently. Um, usually very transparent, very public about what we're doing, make sure that we're, we're making sure that the board is-
All right, I'm, I think this is excellent. I look forward to seeing posting for cleanliness of the bathrooms in the future as well, which is another, um, agenda. But I'm glad that's there with the posting of the cleaning, but that's a conversation later to be had. But I, I look forward to the other areas that many people utilize to be posted on the schedule as well, because it needs to be improved. Thank you. All that blitz of cleaning up, some places you can still tell, some places we need some other, some extra care.
And I'm, I'm ready to help with that.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, I just wanted to say briefly that we have no higher responsibility than to keep our kids safe. So thank you to Darren and his team for, for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
One quick thought, um, once the website is live with all the documentation, could we have an agenda item just so that we have the time of the board to review any other questions that might come up? Um, questions regarding the more detailed information that will be available on the website?
Is I can put up the board? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next item, this item, uh, there are not much here items, so item 7 for action items. 7.01 receives for action, human resources actions.
Good day, board. Um, the recommended human resources department actions for tonight include, which are current due, um, uh, including the agenda, the nomination of 20 employees, the change of contract for 41 employees, the resignation of 14 employees, the return from leave of seven employees, the furlough of six employees, the retirement of five employees, the name change of one employee, the rescission of employment of one employee, the rescission of resignation by one employee, the termination of one employee, and the proportioned death of two employees.
So moved?
Yes, second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Young to approve the HR action and then- All right, question?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby? Ms. Burke? Not Ms. Owen? Yeah. Black's the page?
Yes.
There's a page, yes. The next item, the next item will be consent agenda, I think there are other informational items. The next item is item 10, the business.
So.
Pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711, some section A, some section 1, the code of Virginia 1950 is amended to move the school board to a city version convene closed session to discuss prospective candidates for employment and the assignment permission performance emissions salaries, disciplining resignation of employees of the division included consideration of human resources agenda this date. And sus- suspension of pay and licensure matters and employee matters number 1819-dash-zero-six, number 1819-dash-zero-seven, and number 1819-dash-seven. Second.
All right, Burke?
Aye.
Video phones? Seeing if we have none, so there is.